Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock and we will call to order the City Council meeting for January 24th. And I believe that Brenda Hughes is going to lead us in a prayer and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the gift of our beautiful city and for the opportunity to share this gift with others. We thank you for the rain today that nourishes the life around us, and thank you for the winds that will surely help our allergies. We thank you for this meeting and for leading us down the path that brings you glory. We pray for guidance and clear direction that helps strengthen the bond for our community. Give us the desire to find ways to work together tonight that benefits all citizens who make her veil their home. We thank you for the gift of those who protect our families and keep us safe. We ask that you cover them with armor and shield them from harm. And Lord, strengthen our hearts and minds with your wisdom and grant us peace. We pray these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brenda. Stuart, do we have some announcements?
First one to try this out. So, there it is. It's on the screen here. This Saturday, one of our favorite activities every year, we have the annual stuffed animal sleepover. That's kind of hard to say. Annual stuffed animal sleepover. That's Saturday. The library staff invites parents and children to bring a stuffed animal or doll to our stuffed animal sleepover. That's Saturday, January 28th, four to five p.m. pajamas are welcome. After a lively story and crap, they'll tuck the animals and dolls into bed, say goodnight, and then children return on Monday between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to discover what all the animals have been up to over the weekend. So, great event every year. We look forward to it. I encourage everybody, if you have any questions, call the library at 830-258-1274. All right. And we're hoping that the weather will be a little warmer for this one, but our drive-in movie is coming back. Park and Watch movie, City of Kerrville's Parks and Recreation Department will present the Park and Watch showing of the movie Jumanji. And that will be Friday, February 3rd, beginning at dark at the Kerrville Shriner Park. I don't know, has anybody been to one of these events yet? They're a lot of fun. It's a free event. Food and beverage vendors will be on site. So, there are a couple of rules about what you can and can't do there and bring in. So, be sure and check our website for rules and regulations. But I encourage everybody to come out. That's a huge screen and a lot of fun. Daddy Daughter Dance, we still have some tickets available. That's going to be Saturday, February 18th, at the Happy State Bank Expo. Do we know a number? How many have we sold?
Two hundred and fifteen.
Two hundred and fifteen? That's great. All right. So, it's going to be another great event this year. Look forward to that, but keep that in mind if you haven't made your reservations yet. And then finally, we need lifeguards. This is a great job. If you have a teenager around the house, you want a summer job, you can't go wrong working out at the pool. It's a lot of fun. You get a great tan. We need lifeguards. We need cashiers, assistant managers, and managers. So, if you know someone who might be interested in that and you want to point them our way, please do. They'll be happy to talk to them at the Parks and Recreation. That's my announcements. Chief, did you have anything that you wanted to add about the fire plan?
Yes, I was going to ask the same thing. Please.
Well, though, we don't have it up there, so we're, our department is still working with the community foundation to raise funds to purchase a six-by-six all-terrain vehicle that we will use for fire operations, patient extrication, technical rescue team, and many other emergencies. So, currently, I definitely can say that we're at forty-eight thousand and trying to raise sixty. So, we have the $12,000 to finish out the overall grant. So, we're very excited for that.
What's your deadline?
No deadline, but...
What's your, what's your goal?
A goal would be beginning of February.
Okay. That's about a week.
So, before the next snowstorm, how's that? So, who knows when that'll be.
Good.
Thank you.
While you're up there, you want to speak to your recent retirement real quick?
So, this year, actually on Friday, so Lieutenant Guy McDonald retired after thirty-six years of service with the Kerrville Fire Department and thirty-eight years overall in the fire service, additional two with Big Spring. So, he's local, very proud, and got to send him home safe on Friday. And they did a last call for him in cooperation with Chief McCall on Saturday morning at 07:00. And so, his son currently works with the Kerrville Fire Department, too. So, that's a lot of years, that's a lot of years of service with the Kerrville Fire Department, thirty-six.
That's great. All right. Thank you, Chief. And the only other thing I wanted to add was just thank you to the Doyle community for their Martin Luther King event that they had on Martin Luther King Day. It was just a delightful, delightful time. All right, Shelley, two, number two, do we have any visitors or citizens?
Yes, ma'am, we have two signed up.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Is it on? Okay. I'm Delane Sigerman. I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive, and I'm joined here today with my friends who are Antoinette and Ken. We're going to do a homeless count on Thursday. This is a point and time count that's done one day in the whole state of Texas. There's about 240 cities that participate in the point count, and the purpose of the count is to get data, age and gender and ethnicity, and who are the homeless folks out there? Why are they homeless and how can we help them? So, literally, we have about twenty-plus volunteers who are going to go out Thursday morning with life vest, safety vests. Hopefully, we won't need a life vest. But they've been trained and they have their Counting Us app on their phone, and that's literally where the survey is. So, you use your phone to take the survey. When you see a group of homeless folks, you ask permission to ask the survey questions, and you literally put that information in your phone. So, it goes directly to Austin. There's no paper trail to have to worry about at all. And then in a couple of weeks, we get a report back, how many we counted, where we found them, what their situations were. This information is obtained by HUD. So, indirectly, some of our nonprofits do get funds from HUD based on the fact we do count. So, not only do we have that support because of it, we also have awareness. Our community becomes aware that, yes, we have homeless folks. In fact, Brenda Hughes, one of the council members, and Mike Hayes are going to be one of our counters, and they're actually veterans. This is not their first rodeo. So, we have goodie bags we leave for them. That's made for, by the Sisters in Service, which has all kinds of necessities in there as well as a resource guide. Should they need more information, they can call a number and get help. So, my, my quest tonight is just if you have a spot that you know you've seen homeless, if you would just let me know at dsigerman@gmail.com. Or you can take a flyer, and you can also get in touch with me that way. But I, we, I think we have it covered, but you know, there are places people see that I don't, and we just want to try to count as many as we can on Thursday. So, it's going to be cold. It's hard to count homeless on cold days because they have their resources and they take cover in places where we don't know where they are. So, anyway, that's my plea tonight is if you would like to share with me a place where you've seen homeless, I would appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Delane.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what you're doing.
Barbara Dool Ferguson. Hello, Barbara Dool Ferguson, Dry Hollow Drive here in Kerrville. And what I'm coming to make a comment on tonight is just the fact that the Library Advisory Board was charged by the City Council to take a look at policies at the library. And a lot of the interested community, which is a sizable number, was looking forward to that meeting occurring last week. But when the agenda was published three days before the meeting was to take place, nothing was on the agenda regarding the charge that the council gave to the Library Advisory Board. And then the meeting was canceled. They sent me notice of the meeting seventy-two hours in advance, and that meeting was canceled Tuesday morning, the morning of the meeting, because they did not expect a quorum. On the positive side, the meeting has been rescheduled for February 21st at 3:00 p.m., and it will be held in the library. And I'm sure the public is hopeful that the Library Advisory Board will put the policy review on their agenda and address that. The next meeting after that one is currently scheduled for April, which would be too late to meet the 120-day grace period the city has to redo the interlocal agreement with the county. And we'd all like to see that taken care of so that county residents can continue using the library and so that city residents will be able to rely on animal services. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers?
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We come to the consent agenda. We have several items on there. Counsel, is there anyone who wishes to pull an item?
There are three citizens who wish to speak on item 3A.
3A?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay. All right, then. Do we have a motion to...
I'll move to approve the rest of the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Second that. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it passes. All right. Then, let's hear from our three speakers.
John Anderson.
Mayor Eichner and members of the council, I'm here representing the Guadalupe River Center Foundation, and I'm chairman of our volunteer board. And I, on behalf of our entire board and an awful lot of other volunteers that are working with us, I want to thank you for this expression of support, and we look forward to working with you and with our city manager, EA, and others in the staff as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. Just a house cleaning thing. When these were down there, it was actually a little bit better because we could actually look at you all instead of being kind of like down the line. Just a thought. It's not why I'm here.
This is, we need to stick to the subject, George.
Good Lord. Okay, well, the subject was this project that got asked over and over again if it's going to have an ask, and we were, we were told it would not, didn't have any intention of having an ask. And yet, this resolution seems to have a few sort of in there. They're not specific, but it talks about utilizing the parkland of the city. In what way, we don't know, but that would technically be an ask. It says operate primarily on private funding and grants. When it says primarily instead of solely, that makes me wonder. It throws in there, I think it's in the sections as opposed to the whereas's, but no, it's in the agenda bill. It talks about it being proposed to operate as a public-private partnership. Public-private means publicly involved, more than just a say, hey, we, we support it. It also talks about public support, including in-kind support, which is a trade of something, which I assume would be an ask at some point. And then the last thing was, it talks about using this parkland that was donated to the city, and they mentioned something about possibly leasing the stretch of riverfront that's owned, that was retained by the McDonald's. And I guess my question would be, if the McDonald's are actually going to benefit from this, which they clearly would be as developers of that full land, why wouldn't they just donate one of the two lands or swap with the city so the city still has them instead of being an ask from the city? So, that's basically it, just is it really going to have no ask or is there an ask?
Thank you.
Shall I respond to the previous questions or what?
Just, no, just go ahead with, no, right now, just if Lane will, if Lane will come up, please.
I just wanted to thank everybody for the support of the program. There are a lot of issues that probably need to be looked at. Generally speaking, though, what we came here for was just a request of approval that you guys support the project. We're currently in the capital campaign right now, so it's beneficial to the donors to actually hear that the city's involved with the project. And as far as the details on everything that he just mentioned, I think it's premature to start going through some of that stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Were there any other speakers who said it?
That's the three. Yes, ma'am.
Roman, I understood you have four minutes.
Five minutes, Mayor. We, council, have five minutes.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. So, I want to go over a couple of things, both sides of the issue. I guess already said some of the things I was going to say, so I don't probably have to go over all of that. But one, I was curious, who drafted the main resolution? Because it is my understanding that the group did provide the city with the draft of the resolution. And after getting information, it's my understanding that the draft of the resolution was given to the city before our workshop on the 10th, two weeks ago. So, I'm wondering why council didn't have a copy of it to look at beforehand so we knew when y'all came with the presentation what your ask would be and a general idea of what the resolution of support was. Because it's my understanding that all you're seeking is a resolution of the city expressing support to help with your funding efforts. Is that right? No?
I think they've answered, I think they have answered the questions.
Okay.
So, I think, I think we're fine there.
Okay. Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask them the questions. I'm not asking any of us on council the questions. So, if you don't want to let them answer the questions, that's fine. I was wondering if somebody could explain why the, I wish I'd gone first. It didn't seem like I was piggybacking off of somebody else, but why the agenda item and the resolution refer to a public-private partnership, a city's in-kind support, the use of city land, and instructing our city manager to cooperate with and assist the corporation's efforts in this? Because I guess that goes beyond actually what the ask was for, which is just support to help you with your financial efforts in your campaign. My question, if anybody wants to answer after, is what are the specifics of the city's in-kind support? What are the terms of this public-private partnership? And I've also been told that the group doesn't want to have any liability for anything on the boardwalk or on the boat ramp. And my question is, has that been discussed with the city? Yeah, so basically, when y'all came, this was presented to council, it was just express support was all that was being said. And when I asked if there was any other wants or needs, the answer was essentially, no, this is what we want. This is, we just need a resolution of support for your campaign. And so, that's what we agreed to. But now, we have an agenda item that is beyond the ask of the corporation. I was prepared to vote on that, and we had a meeting after the workshop and before this meeting about that, and I was told it's just, simply has language in it, just says you're supporting the development. No other asks are in it. But the draft of the resolution that was given to the city is pretty much almost exactly similar to what we have here. And so, that makes me wonder what else is going on. And so, I'm concerned that we're obligating a future council to support this project with undefined terms and with an undefined agreement. So, with that, I would have two things or two recommendations that I would like council to consider. One is, we could, I would ask that we table the resolution, if we're going to keep it as it is, and have staff in the corporation return with clearly defined terms of the partnership, in terms of the in-kind asks and the public-private partnership, whatever that looks like, and the use of the land, and whether it's leased, whether we're selling it, or how they're going to use it. Or two, we just table the resolution and then ask staff to amend it to the extent that all it is is just showing support for the project and getting rid of all the other asks that are inherently in there right now. So, those are the things I would ask. I have the questions. If somebody would like to answer them, I would appreciate a response to that. It'd be very helpful to me. Thank you.
Would you want to respond?
Yes, I, I think we could, let me, number one, I appreciate your questions. I mean, I, I think as a, as a council member, it's, it's understandable and very appropriate. This is a big project. It's, it will be complicated, and I appreciate your questions. I think that I'd like to simplify it. We are simply, we are in the process right now of seeking private funding in the amount of close to $10 million. We're doing that at the suggestion of the city seven months ago because it was very clear that that kind of money wasn't going to be likely available for a project like this. So, we were encouraged to go seeking private funds, and we created a volunteer board, and we have been doing that. We simply sought from the council an indication, an expression, that you understand this project's going on and that you support, and what we, the word ask has been used several times. We did not ask for money or in-kind from the city. What we did ask for is an expression to say, you know, from what we can see, this is, this would be good for our community. The presumption is that you would have, and we have, is that we obviously are going to comply with all of the laws, the regulations, the permitting, and everything else. The other thing that we sought there is simply an expression to encourage, make it clear that we should be able to communicate and work with the city's staff as we go forward because we have not done any of the detailed work or planning that will be necessary in this because unless we raise the funds, it's a moot point. So, all of our focus right now is to work with the fundraising, and an expression of support from the city would demonstrate clearly to, to individuals in this region who are considering supporting this would simply indicate that you're aware of it and that this, you know, from what you know about it, this, you support it. That's all we're after.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, I'm not opposed to the whole project. That's not what my statements were for, but thank you for that.
Do you have a motion that you would like to bring forth?
I would. So, I think he helped me understand some of that. So, they're not asking for the in-kind or money or anything like that now, just the support. So, my motion would be to, I would move to table the resolution and ask staff to amend it to the extent to remove any language that refers to cities in-kind support, use of land, I guess that was, use of land or anything else beyond the fact that the city is just supporting the project.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I mean, that's what they're asking for, so I'm just making a motion to do what they're asking for.
Okay, the motion dies because of a second. Do we have another motion?
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 032023, a resolution expressing our support for the development of the Upper Guadalupe River Center.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, one against. All right, let's move on then. Thank you very much. And we are ready for, for A. Shelley, read that in. Read that in, please. I'm sorry.
Ordinance Number 2023-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning for properties known as 402, 405, 406, 407, 409, 410, 411, 413, 414, and 415 West Water, consisting of the Westland addition from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning District R1A to a residential transition zoning District RT, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for the block of West Water Street. Let's see. There we go. All right. New technology. Trying to make sure I get this worked right. This is the 400 block of West Water Street. The property owners have come together to request this block be rezoned from R1A to RT. Here's the future land use plan. The RT is consistent with the neighborhood residential place type. Here's the zoning district, or the zoning map, excuse me. You can see the 300 block of West Water Street is RT, and this 400 block is mostly R1A excluding the one lot at 400 that is RT and the planned development district across the street for the existing business. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case for approval with unanimous vote on December 1st. Please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right. Counsel, do you have some questions for Drew before we call the first individual?
One question. Does the, does a proposed new residential transition zoning district allow for short-term rentals?
It does.
Does the current zoning allow for short-term rentals?
Yes, it does.
No, the current zoning?
Yeah, the current zoning, R1A, allows for short-term rentals, and RT allows for short-term rentals.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's have our first speaker.
I believe it's the applicant, Russell Nimke.
Okay.
And you can go ahead and open the public hearing, ma'am.
Thank you. I forgot. At 6:26, we will open the public hearing.
All right, thank you. My name is Russell Nimke. I live at 515 Elm Street. I also own 411 West Water Street. I formerly lived at 414 West Water Street as well. I'm mainly here to just answer any questions y'all might have, any and all questions if I can, and I will go from there. I'm sure there are some.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
What's the purpose? Why are we doing this?
So, the way we all kind of got together is like when I lived on 414 and then also owned 411, we kind of saw the, the block kind of changing. The whole block right next to us down towards Five Points is kind of business-type, type area. And then, it kind of started coming in with a 400. 400 is Texas Feneal is there, and then there's a beauty shop on the corner. So, then, you know, as y'all are well-known and P&amp;Z is well-known, knows that all the short-term rental stuff's kind of started coming up. So, then, everybody kind of got excited on the block. There's three different short-term rentals at 402, 414, and 409. So, then, some of the people on the block were kind of thinking, well, we might not be able to get it, and we might be out of compliance. So, then, it got more people interested in it. So, then, we started talking to all the, all the owners, and people were saying, well, it is kind of transitioning in this neighborhood. It kind of looks like an RT neighborhood. Maybe we should go ahead and apply for the RT zoning just because the neighborhood is changing. Everybody on the block kind of agreed with that. We talked with all the, all the owners, and we decided to apply, and that's kind of where we're at. Right now, no one on the block really has any, any plans to change, really. There's, there's two alcohol and drug rehab houses on that block. There's three short-term rentals, like I said, one long-term resident at 406. And I think, and 415 is vacant right now. So, it's just kind of, it's a transitioning neighborhood, and we thought it fit with the 2050 plan and things like that. So, that's about it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there, is that the only speaker, Shelley?
That's the only speaker.
All right. All right. At, are there any other speakers who wish to say something? All right. At 6:29, we will close the public hearing. And counsel, just kind of as a reminder of how we need to do things, we sometimes forget, and we've kind of started a new year. So, after our public hearing and listening to individuals from the public, then we will come back to council. We can do one of two things. We can have a motion and then do our discussion at four minutes each, or we can have four minutes each of discussion, and then we can call for a motion. So, is anyone ready to call for a motion at this point?
I am, if you're willing to hear it.
All right.
I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 202306, as requested by the applicant.
All right. Do we have a second to that? Do we have a second to that? Brenda, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Wait, do we have discussion now?
Oh, well, yes, we do. Okay, my fault. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Four minutes. Joe, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Roman?
I have a couple of questions. So looking at the future land use plan that we have for this area, these, the, the properties that are selected here are in the neighborhood residential category, right? And there is a, it's supposed to be predominantly for residential and then very, I think it says something like light use or slight use for, was it like light commercial or something to that effect?
Right.
How far do we, do we have something in effect that tells us how far we're going to go into making all of these neighborhoods residential, you know, residential transition if they come and apply to Council? Because what we're seeing right now, when I'm looking at it, is we have on the, what is it, the south side? Southeast side, I think it's 400 at least is the closest one that's zoned RT right now. And that's kind of one of the things we're looking at is it can be zoned RT because there's some RT area next to it. So as we expand this, it creates a, a bigger zone of RT properties, and then other people can come in and say, well, we have RT here, we're going to keep expanding. How far do we go until we say there's, we shouldn't put any more RT in this, in this zone because it's supposed to be predominantly for just residential purposes?
Right. Then, as you mentioned, the place type, excuse me, the future land use plan, that neighborhood residential place type, does not specify what that acreage percentage or location is. That's part of what Planning Commission and Council look at on a case-by-case basis for those requests. So if we did see additional creep into the core of the neighborhood, we would look at that as far as our recommendation, if it is or is not consistent. Obviously, if we have more commercial uses than we have residential uses, we're not meeting the intent of that place type.
Okay.
So it's not a, a black and white, hard-line recommendation.
That's where P&amp;Z and Council have to come in a way and say, is it using a properly use of, proper use of the zoning that we have in place in our future land map? Okay.
Okay, take care of things, Roman.
Um, yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
Brenda? Any comments?
No.
Tim? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. And let's look at 4B. Shelley?
Ordinance Number 2023-07, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of a property known as 3800 Loop 534, consisting of Lot 1, Block 5 of the Leaging Hills Phase 4 subdivision being approximately 3.56 acres and within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a medium-density residential zoning District R2 to a light commercial zoning District C2, and provided, providing other matters relating to the subject. We don't have any citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for 3.56 acres along Loop 534, right next to the fire station, to go from C, or R2 to C2. This is within the transitional residential place type, not to be confused with the residential transition zoning district. That place type does specify as well that there is a commercial, a limited amount of commercial within that area for, for the community. This being on 530, Loop 534, separated from the main neighborhood by a drainage easement, obviously does not have any direct access to the neighborhood, is consistent with that place type. Again, it's on, currently zoned R2, they are requesting C2, which would be consistent with the Loop 534 corridor. On December 1st, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case with unanimous vote, and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
All right. All right, any further questions, Council of Drew? All right, let's open the public hearing at 6:34, and we will have our speaker.
Good evening, Ms., excuse me, good evening, Ms. Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Kaufon. I run C3 Aquatics here in town, right down the road at 1407 Water Street, the Center for Fitness, and we teach swim lessons. So we're a two-leg approach. We teach swim lessons, and we have a swim team. We've been doing the swim lesson thing for about 40 years. My mom started in backyard pools a long time ago, and I picked up on it about 11 years ago. And then three and a half years ago, we decided to take this concept of teaching lessons and water safety and take it year-round at the Center for Fitness. And so we've been doing that for three and a half years. We started a swim team along the journey, C3 Swim. It's been exciting. But, but the reason why we want to do this change right here is to have a pool, small pool, with a covering, bathrooms, that sort of thing, to start teaching swim lessons at our own place. And if that went well, we would then look at potentially a, a larger pool, but we need to grow revenue before we do that, and a smaller pool makes sense right now from, from kind of the standpoint of where our company is. And so, yeah, we, we love teaching children. We teach kids from ages six months. We have a water babies program. We have elementary education program in the water, and then we have early swim team all the way up to 18 years old, and we have adult learn-to-swim. We kind of do all, all the water stuff. And I think, I guess what separates us from some other learn-to-swim in town, which we, we recognize and love and appreciate, is that we're, we're year-round. So we're not just in the summertime when it's hot. We're in the fall, we're in the winter, we're going right now, it's cold out. And I think there's something to say to that. So San Antonio's got Aqua Tots, Almers, they got a million of these kinds of things. This concept isn't kind of weird. It's not unknown. This concept just hasn't been introduced to Kerrville, the year-round swim lesson concept. We've had a swim team about 10 years ago, I think at the Family Sports Center, and then we've kind of picked up on that. But the, but the learn-to-swim, the swim lesson concept is something we're going after, and I think we could do another this property. But it has to be C2 to do it, and so that's why we're approaching you guys. And, yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Hopefully, we'll have some answers.
And it will be an indoor?
Yes, it would have to be indoor just because we're dealing with smaller children. Majority of our kids, 80, 90% of our learn-to-swim kids are three, four, five years old.
All right, Council, any further questions of this gentleman? Joe, Roman?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, no other speakers, Shelley?
No, ma'am.
Does, is there anyone in the room who wanted to address this subject? All right. At 6:38, we will close the public hearing, and are you ready for a motion, Council?
I move that we approve Ordinance Number 2023-07 on first reading.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Best of luck, y'all.
All right, we are ready for 4C.
Ordinance Number 2023-08, an ordinance annexing a tract of land to the corporate limits of the City of Kerrville, Texas, such property making up approximately 0.08 acres and generally located adjacent to and south of Lehman Drive in the area that Lehman Drive intersects with Lemon Lane, Leonard Lane. Such property more specifically describing this ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits, adopting a service agreement, establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a public and institutional PU zoning district, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do not have any citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is .08 acres to be annexed into the city and zone public and institutional. This is within the strategic catalyst area number two, surrounded the hospital complex. This is a small portion of basically the hillside that will eventually be right-of-way as they, the hospital reworks this intersection with their new construction. This was left out of the initial application for annexation, but the street will be widened a little bit as they realign some of that intersection. So eventually, it will be right-of-way instead of public property or private property. And on December 1st, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case with unanimous vote.
Okay, they are going to town back there, what they're doing. All right, we do not have any, well, first of all, we will open the public hearing at 6:40. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, we will close the public hearing at 6:40. And Council, are you ready for a motion or?
I move, Mayor, that we approve Ordinance Number 2023-8.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it passes. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to 5A.
Ordinance Number 2023-03, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, titled Buildings and Building Regulations, by adding a new Article X titled Outdoor Lighting to create standards for outdoor lighting to minimize light pollution, glare, and light trespass caused by inappropriate or misaligned light fixtures while improving nighttime public safety, utility, and security, providing effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. And we do have five citizen speakers signed up.
All right, do we have anyone from staff that has anything to add? All right, let's go to our first speaker.
Greg Martin.
My name is Greg Martin. I'm at 126 Oak Crest Way. And Mayor and Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was here for the first reading last month and received a favorable, it received a favorable reception. I'm hoping for the same tonight. But I would, I'm not going to repeat what I had said last time. I'll simply add a little more information. Certainly, I support the ordinance, and I would ask that, as I gather my thoughts, there's really three things I would emphasize. That's enjoyment and value and recognition. And the enjoyment would be the enjoyment of the citizens of Kerrville by having night skies protected, where we can enjoy the, the stars, we can enjoy the heavens, and we also are less affected by light trespass from neighbors. And everyone probably has their own story on that, where someone has had a light, they not being mean, they just kind of, every night, they turned it on and it went on too long. And what, what this would provide is a transition over a number of years to fix the issues of light trespass as well as continue to protect the skies that we have as best we can. And I was very impressed with what the Code Review Committee did and the work that they, they did, and frankly, they were a gathering of people of varying interests, including those of developers, and it, it went through just fine with a lot of hard work. And, you know, I would say that that work is most commendable, and the ordinance, as it came out, should certainly benefit. So I would say the enjoyment of the citizens is something that would be certainly enhanced by the adoption of this ordinance. The other one is the value of it, and that is that the tourism dollars that we believe will come. And we, it's been demonstrated in other cities and other locations that having the protection of the night skies, having the ability to view the night skies over an extended period of time, does bring revenues to the city, does bring revenues, whether it's restaurants or lodging or just people coming through and buying gasoline. There is an increase in, in the value to the city of having the reputation of being a night sky-friendly city, and we're trying to get to where we're one of the international dark skies communities, and this is a step in that direction. The third thing I would say is the recognition piece, and that is that Kerrville to be recognized as a city that's progressive in the right directions, that's progressive about protecting the amenities for the cities, I'm sorry, the amenities for the citizens, and the reputation that the community has for being forward-thinking without being given, how do I say this, without being intrusive on the citizens, but rather being cooperative with their enjoyment of life that we have here in Kerrville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker?
Dawn Davies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dawn Davies. I'm the Night Sky Program Manager for Hill Country Alliance. I was also here for the first reading, and will very much echo everything that was just spoken, but also bring to your attention the benefits this has economically for energy usage, the cost benefits it will have to the residents and the business owners, also echoing what was just spoken about, how this will set the city apart from others and act as a role model city for communities and municipalities that don't have these ordinances yet. But it is optimum for natural, you know, infrastructure, for the betterment of the environment, for the night skies, and, and overall, just abating light pollution. Recent studies that just came out within the last week or so, whereas we formerly thought that we were losing the night sky at a rate of 2% per year, has now gone up to 10%. So enacting this ordinance does a lot more than just make it able for us to see the night sky and for astronomers to take advantage of the stars, but overall, the health benefits, the animal habitat that will benefit from this. You know, Kerrville is putting a foot forward and saying, it stops here. This is, this is where the skies are dark, and this is where, you know, that line continues into the Hill Country. And I think, given the most recent information about this increase, you know, we can't sit around and, and do nothing. So I really want to applaud the Code Council and Committee for putting together this ordinance and working so diligently, and for you on the Council for approving it last month, and just want to voice our appreciation to Hill Country Alliance and all of our partners and our associates, that we are very pleased and, and very grateful that you've taken this step forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Barton.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Barton. I live at 190 Chisholm Trail in Ingram. The fact that I am not a Kerrville resident, but rather from out of, out of the city limits, should go to illustrate the fact that when it comes to the decisions you make regarding quality of life issues such as this, you good people cast a long shadow, and I don't mean that as a pun. It is my fervent hope that one day, the citizens of Kerrville, our kids, our grandkids, and their kids, might be able to walk out into their front yard or their backyard and look up and once again see and appreciate the splendor of the Milky Way. I think that's a quality of life issue that goes well beyond the city limits, and it is my hope that by passing this ordinance, that you will be able to set the groundwork for our ability jointly to achieve that. And I thank you for considering that, this, this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Wessels.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Wessels, and I am a Kerrville native. I grew up enjoying the many amazing natural wonders that Kerrville has to offer, including the night sky. What we do here today matters for each individual person, our community, and generations to come. We have a collective experience of this natural heritage that is too precious to lose, and this ordinance will be something that future generations can point to as having made a real impact towards helping maintain the character of Kerrville, a place we all love. We have this incredible opportunity before us to preserve the awe and wonder of the night sky and leave a legacy that will outlast us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Brinkman.
My name is Kathleen Brinkman. I live at 160 Camaro Drive. First, I want to thank the Council, and I especially want to thank the Code Committee for the consideration of this ordinance. They- The code committee did a wonderful job analyzing it, asking the hard questions, and getting to the root of the matter. Other members of the council and I both attended the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center discussions that were held last week. And it was interesting to me how the number one primary benefit that everyone in that large room seemed to see was the natural beauty of Kerrville and also the small-town feel of Kerrville. Those aspects were very important to everyone in that room. And I look at this ordinance and see something that will actually deliver that for the citizens, not only of Kerrville, but for our surrounding area. This is a great opportunity that the council has to do something that benefits every person in this community and in the county at large, and for people just driving by on I-10. At minimal cost, actually no cost to the community itself, light fixtures that are night sky compliant cost no more than lights that cause light pollution. So by taking this step, the county is doing it at no cost to any of the citizens, but at a huge benefit. As my compatriots here have said, the goal should be that every child, big and small, can walk out into their backyard, look up, and see the Milky Way. And we thank the council for supporting this effort and doing this, taking the steps that are needed to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, all right. Counsel, we, are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make, oh.
I can wait till your motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-3 on second reading.
Second.
A second, all right. Do we have some discussion?
There's a couple of questions. No amendments were made to the ordinance. Is that correct?
It does include the exhibits that we discussed at the last meeting.
Right.
That's it.
That's as far as it goes. Okay. And just to clarify, if there are current lights that are up, and instead of replacing the bulb, needing to replace the bulb, they need to cover it with some type of shielding, that's something else that they, some citizen would have to go out and purchase, right, to come in compliance with this ordinance and whatever the case may be?
It depends on each light, but some lights would just be change of a bulb, some would be adding shielding, some would be a replacement.
And I guess the last thing, do we have any information from the local group or anything from staff or the code review committee on what the impact is to the safety of the citizens in the community as we make our community darker in the evenings and in the later times in the day?
I, what I've been, what I've, I've been told as a member of the code review committee, I'm on other things, and I'm not the expert, but I am on the committee, is that light shielding can actually reduce glare, which makes safety, improve safety. I believe in the last council meeting, we were shown that slide of light glare, not being able to see a person. But when the light was shielded improperly, downlit, you could actually see more, and that it improves safety.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Right? Yeah, okay. Okay, raise your right hand, please. And we have four and against? We have one against. All right. Thank you all for all of your work, for the committee and staff, and this is going to go a long way for our communities. It's going to be a great, great thing. Our kids, not our kids maybe, but our grandkids and maybe great-grandkids someday are going to say, this was good. All right, let's, let's go to 5B.
Ordinance number 2023-04, second reading. An ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating all right title and interest in the public right of way, consisting of an unimproved, unopened portion of West Street that exists between the properties addressed at 620 and 704 Junction Highway, State Highway 27, said right of way out of the Westland Place Edition, a subdivision within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas pursuant to the plat, recorded in volume one, page 26, the plat records of Kerr County, Texas, and corresponding field notes. And located within the City of Kerrville, Texas, funding the said portion is not required or future use as a public street, ordering, recording, providing effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Is there anybody from staff that wants to say anything? All right, let's have our speaker.
George Berudi.
Yes, you may ask a question now.
Okay, I'll just ask, are, there are, I just want to confirm, a number of amendments in this ordinance, right?
Which I provided you, right, right.
Right, and you gave us those like a week in advance, way before today, or the agenda wasn't even posted, so we saw that way in advance. I'm curious to the reasoning, if we can get some explanation for the public of the amendments that were made, just because that wasn't from council.
I, as I provided to council, based upon your discussion and at the last meeting, I felt like I could help with the ordinance to clarify some issues, and that's what I've done. You know, as mentioned last time, we were going to go through a process to determine value based on first, the appraisal, and then some of the property interests that are currently there that we're going to reserve, and then some additional property interest. I just clarified the ordinance, kind of how that's going to work. I'd make the argument that nothing substantive has changed in the ordinance, just language to clarify process, kind of the transaction, simplify the transaction where I could, and hopefully give you all some better information about, you know, what this ordinance does. It's a simple ordinance, really just gives us the authority to vacate and close and abandon West Street and, and then work with the adjacent property owners or one or both to divest ourselves of that, of that main interest, but then keeping the interest for running our utilities through that area.
Okay. And the conveyance or the vacating or the, yeah, that has to happen after it's abandoned, right?
Well, you know, it's kind of a, and I just track state law, so, you know, it's kind of a closure, abandonment, and vacation. Well, the, the negotiation and what the quote-unquote value is has to occur first, and then at some point, when we agree with the property owners, really, there's going to be three transactions that will occur. One, we'll file the ordinance and the property records. We will actually deed our interest because we own it as fee simple, and so we'll, we'll deed our interest to one or both, excuse me, of those property owners. And then, within 12 months, as the ordinance provides, they'll have to plat it pursuant to our subversion code.
Thank you. That's what I was, and that's where I was going to go with that, finishing off with. It seems we're having, we have two different actions in an ordinance, and I would like to see if we could separate those to make sure that the appraisal and everything is done first, the abandonment, all that happens, and then we move on to the next step, however we, we work that out, again, with the terms in place, that we get something and they get something, and that's clearly defined.
Let's, let's go ahead and hear our speaker.
George Beri, 1616 Glen Road. So the, the main question I had is, I mean, state laws that you have to do the appraisal, put a value on it, whether it's an appraisal or an auction, prior to conveyance. The way this ordinance reads, council is ceding its authority to weigh in on the value to staff, which, I'm not saying they're untrustworthy or something, but your fiduciary responsibility is to assess the value and determine at that point the conveyance. And the way it's worded, you're being, you're leaving it off, and you're saying, we're going to convey this, and the check that, the box that needs to be checked is simply that an appraisal is done and that staff will handle it from there. It should really be, an appraisal is done, it's brought to you, and you're told that the value of what you're giving away is this, the value of what you're getting is this, and you approve that conveyance or that transaction. That's, I mean, that's the law, as it's written. You can do that by auction, or you can do that by appraisal, and it's perfectly fine either way. To the point that it's an unvaluable piece of land, independently, that might be true. If I was to go buy that strip of land, it, there's not much I can do with it. But as I understand, it's about a fifth of an acre, and it's, it's required, I mean, it's necessary for this property owners. There's value to this property owner because without it, they can't do a drive-through it there, which is, I understand, is what they would like to do. So there's value to it. And to put in perspective, the land value of what they have is about, I know it's not all equivalent, I get all that, but their, the land value of their property is 160,000, it's being assessed at that. That's point eight something acres, acre. So we're looking at a fourth of that coming in, and we're saying it has no value. I would argue that you could, you could get some value out of it, and you, you really should. You shouldn't just cede it away. So that would be my.
Counsel, I want to be clear, I never said there wasn't any value. I mean, we'll first start with an appraisal. Appraisal is going to take into account the current utilities that exist in that property. I think, I could make the argument that this property isn't worth anything to anyone other than these two property owners that can put a driveway over our, our utility lines. And then, of course, one of the property owners has already agreed to extend that easement into his current property to give us some more space to, to, I think, accommodate our, our new drainage way. So bottom line, there's, there's going to be value, it just may not be a check that comes across or financially.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for clarifying there. And, no, I am perfectly comfortable that the way we are going about this is, is going to take care of the situation. At this point, then, are we ready for a motion, or is there more discussion?
Ready to provide a motion if you're ready for one.
All right.
I love that we adopt ordinance number 2023-04 on a second reading.
A second.
Yes. We have a first, a motion and a second. All in, is there any discussion? All right, everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is four, four opposed.
One.
Four.
It was.
Four.
And one against. All right, thank you, counsel, very much. All right, we are ready for 5C. Shall we?
Ordinance number 2023-05, second reading. An ordinance admitting ordinance number 2022-26 and the Advorian Tax for the using support of the municipal government for the City of Kerrville, Texas for fiscal year 2023. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, is there any staff member who wishes to say anything? Okay, let's go to our speaker.
George Berudi.
Okay. We're speaking after him.
Would you like them now or just put them in tomorrow?
Let's just, just hold them in, we'll look at them.
Can I get mine? Can I get mine so I can see what, is it something that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Can I see what it is?
Basically referencing.
Yeah, I'd like to see also. Okay.
Thank you. I'll take mine, too.
All right, so George Beri, 1616 Glen Road. So basically, there's really only one relevant question in front of you on this item, which is whether or not you, a municipality has the authority to adopt a tax rate after the state law imposed deadline of September 30. I asked it last meeting, and I asked you to ask for it, and really didn't get that question asked or, or answered. So I took it upon myself, and it's, it's in there to back up what I'm saying here, but I went to the state comptrollers. There is no really authority on the tax code, okay? So I'm not going to sit there and say there is. But the state comptroller is allowed to put out information about property tax code. And so I went to them and I asked them the question, can a city adopt a, a tax rate after that September 30 deadline? That's, that's in the tax code that you have, you must adopt a tax rate by September 30. So I asked the comptroller, and their property tax division says, no, you can't. There is no allowance made in, in code where you can. TML puts out a calendar of dates, deadlines, and in their words, it's an absolute deadline. And they say, you can't, you must adopt a tax rate by September 30. There's no, no allowance for doing it after that. City of, comptroller pointed me to the City of Perrin because they ran into a situation a lot more dire than we're having here, where they came into a shortfall because of a misrepresented tax rate, for lack of a better deal. And so I reached out to them, council members, and oddly enough, as soon as I sent the email, just as an aside, one of their council members called me on the phone, so I thought that was pretty impressive. But, but they referred me to their city attorney, who then, and it's in there, the email that I asked, basically just asked the question, can, is there any allowance for this? And, because they were told that they could not change their tax rate to fix their problem. And so I asked them, you know, did they have legal advice telling them that? City attorney said, referred me to the same section of the tax code, saying, no, there is no allowance that he could find allowing you to go past that window of opportunity of September 30. So, and the, and the state law, just so you know, is the tax code 26.05, which enforces that September 30 deadline. Last meeting, nobody asked him, but the tax assessor, Kerr County tax assessor, yeah, he's still here, he really didn't get asked that question, and I'm guessing it's because he wouldn't have answered as yes. I think it would have been a no comma, is basically the way I interpreted it. He didn't say yes or no, so I'm not going to say he did. And it was really the same thing from the city attorney here, really didn't say yes or no. He said there was no code on it. In fact, there's no code giving you the authority to do that. So you were presented two options last time, and it appears that the option that was being recommended isn't even an option that you have. So back to the original thing, you really only had the one option to fix this. And I asked the question, trying to figure out when the city actually knew about this situation, it had to have been in the beginning of December. Mr. Reeves told me that he got notified in the second week of December, so it happened before that. So for a month, city council was not made aware of it. Had you been made aware of it, the problem would have been fixed sooner and properly. Instead, you're, you're about to take action that isn't in compliance with the law. And I, I would encourage you to not do so and just.
Thank you.
Otherwise.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, does, does anyone have a, some comments that would like to make, or are we ready for a motion?
I do. Okay, I would like to give our city attorney and the tax assessor an opportunity to respond to those questions about the authority that we have, if there is a specific provision to do this.
I'm happy to respond, and my response won't change from what I said last time. You all adopted a tax rate on time in September, and this action before you is, is merely to correct a mistake. And to the extent that I was involved in that, of course I am, it's an ordinance, I take full responsibility for that. When I learned of this, I did the research, and as the speaker said, there's nothing in state law that addresses this, both from a requirement or a prohibition. And so I checked with TML, I looked at the comptrollers website multiple times, I kind of doubled my efforts into state law, and I believe our finance department had discussions with the tax assessor-collector as to his research, and all of our research basically came to the same conclusion. This is a very unique situation, and we're just trying to make the best of a, of a mistake. This is a very unique situation and we're just trying to make the best of a, of a mistake, right? And that means, in my opinion, going to the higher rate by point 0002 and then through the adoption of an ordinance and the action taken before you, you know, providing as much public notice as we can. That's, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reeves, did you want to say anything on that too?
Only if you have questions.
Just if you have, I guess, anything different than what Mr. Hayes said about our authority do to change?
Yes, you may.
And is my time going so I can see that, so I know how much time I have left?
No, I didn't know that you were making comments.
Go ahead and, and answer the question.
As I've said in correspondence with finance department and what Mr. Hayes has commented, I use the term uncharted territory. I believe I was asked, you know, where in the code. It doesn't address this. I also said at the last meeting, I work for you, I will follow your instructions. So I'm not going to quote property code, I didn't pass the bar. I won't finish the rest of it, but Mr. Hayes knows what comes after that. I'm not a lawyer, I'm a tax collector, I collect your taxes, I will follow what you say.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Bob, thank you, Bob.
Something I have procedurally to ask for the ordinance that's before us.
Can we start the timer, please?
Sure.
And the ordinance that was adopted to adopt the tax rate, the original ordinance. The ordinance that's before us, we're making two amendments to the original ordinance. And one of those amendments is for the tax rate to now read point 5752. And I assume that's instead of the tax rate that we, council adopted at that meeting, 5750. When I got a copy of the ordinance that was enacted and signed by the mayor, it shows the tax rate as reading point 5752. So as a procedural matter, how are we amending an ordinance that reads the same way that we're trying to amend it? We're, we're saying, we're, we're changing it to this, but it already has this in it. So what change are we making to that? Is that, because I was looking at where, how did we get to where we are? Is that where the error occurred in that ordinance not being changed, that number? I'm getting a nod from our finance.
Again, you took a roll call vote of 5750. The ordinance that was signed was a previous version that said 5752.
Okay, so that, okay, so that's where we are. So how can the ordinance that is being proposed for us to adopt say that we're changing it to 5752 if it already says that?
Because the ordinance that you adopted should have been changed to 57.
50.
Five, oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. So I was, I was still trying to figure out, I was a little confused still after the last meeting, how we got to where we are today. And it wasn't until I received, and I asked for a copy of, of the enacted ordinance so I could see what was going on. Was it the signed ordinance that was incorrect? Was it just another copy that was given and I found out it was the signed one and the one that our roll call votes were marked on that was incorrect the entire time, even after council made the amendment?
And council, council member Garcia, we say this all the time. When you get information like that and you got a question, give us a call.
Right, and, and I did, and I asked that in advance. And I'm just trying to make that information public so everybody's aware that I'm here too. So, but I appreciate that. The last thing is that we're still waiting and it, I guess we've gotten a response now. There is nothing in state law or the tax code that covers this. And so with all due respect to those, that doesn't help me as a council member in my position sitting here when I'm told you have an ordinance here in front of you to change the tax rate. And yet I've gotten information from city attorney, TML, tax assessor that says there's no provision in state law for you to do what you're doing. And then even TML explicit, and a TML attorney explicitly told me you're prohibited from doing this. Here I am wondering, okay, we need to take a pause and step back and figure out what is the solution that is in compliance with state law? How are we going to move forward? Because right now, what we're doing is not in state law.
But there is no state law that covers it.
You're right, there isn't. So why are we doing it is my question.
Because we need to make a decision and we need, we need to correct this.
Right, and my decision I would ask would be to be in compliance with state law. So if state law doesn't says, doesn't say, go ahead and do this, counsel, because you have the authority to change your tax code after the deadline. We need to find out what's an alternate solution. Because we can't, I'm not comfortable in my duty as a council member to follow and the laws, we took a note to, you know, protect and defend the laws of this state. I'm not comfortable adopting an ordinance that gives us no law to do this. And instead, I would like to see there is law on possibly another solution. We were given, given an option at the last meeting. And so out of the two options, if one doesn't comply with law, I guess you're left with the other one.
Do you want to make a motion then?
I would be happy to, I guess, if, I don't know if it's going to change anybody else's mind, but.
But you have the right to make a motion.
I do, so in hopes that we can find a solution that does comply with the law, I would move to deny ordinance number 2023 dash 05 and ask staff to come back to us with an option, whether it's the other option that was given to us. My motion ended at deny 05 and instruct staff, and instruct staff to return to us, to give us a, an option that does comply with law. Maybe that second option, if that's the case.
Do we have a second to this motion? Okay, it dies for lack of a second.
Mayor, I have, I have some comment.
You may, yes.
All right. So at our last council meeting, and I wrote this up, I was surprised and I was also sad that a member of coun- council suggested that the ordinance we were being asked to consider was a violation of state law. Our attorney, Mike Hayes, who has been with the city for almost 20 years, specifically told us before council had discussion that number one, he had consulted with TML legal counsel. And number two, he had reviewed state law and then determined that our situation was unprecedented. That means that there is nothing in existence, it hasn't been documented before. So what happens when there is not a state law that specifically addresses our current situation? So after meeting with, after the first reading of the tax rate ordinance, I consulted with Mike again. Again, he's our city attorney and he's the first person I go to for counsel. He likened our situation, I'm sorry, let's see. I, I asked who he had spoken to at TML because I also wanted to get additional clarification from the person that he spoke to. He gave me the name of the general counsel that he spoke to at Texas Municipal League, TML, Bill Langley, and then I spoke to him specifically. Mr. Langley confirmed that he had spoken to Mike and that he also did not know of any situation as unique as ours. He likened our situation to a Scrivener's or clerical error. I asked how another council member might, might receive a conflicting answer from TML and was told that any attorney's answers are conditioned on the specific questions that are asked in the context that is provided. So Mr. Langley concluded by reminding me that emails and phone conversations between council members in the Texas Municipal League contain a disclaimer stating that they provide content and opinions for informational purposes only and that every city official and employee should consult with local legal counsel to ensure that any information or documents comply with the current law and the particular facts of each situation. Based on that information, I was provided by our city attorney and the general counsel for TML, I find, I find it false to state that we're being asked to consider an ordinance that violates state statute. To repeat, it doesn't exist because it's unprecedented. So I'll then return to the two choices we've been asked to consider. Do we return $4,000 at the expense of $9,000 for the hopes that people will cash what is averaged at 56, 56 cent checks? Or do we amend our tax rate to match what was collected through a clerical error? And then that tax rate is going to be adjusted in future years based on any amount that we overcollect. So, because I don't want to waste $9,000 and I hope that, in hopes that citizens will cash small return checks and knowing that the tax rate is going to be adjusted to compensate for any overcollections, I am going to vote that we are going to, to approve amending the tax rate. And those are my reasons for, for doing that.
Is that a motion?
So I will go back to the motion. And I will move that we approve ordinance number 2023 dash four on second reading and authorize the city manager to complete any and all necessary actions to finalize the prop. Okay, that was the wrong one. You've already passed on, sorry, go back. All right, all I have to do is say I want to approve it? Okay, I want to approve ordinance number 2023 dash 05 on second reading. That was a lot interesting.
Second period. A motion in a second?
Wait, wait, wait.
Mayor, council members, you're going to have to state that motion again. We're trying to, we're fixing the, we're trying to fix the error.
Right, and that's just the action that was listed on here.
If you'll just do the motion, state that as false.
We need all of what we're, it says.
Yes, yes, yes. Then a roll call vote.
Do you want me to read the entire item?
If you see.
My action on my agenda says approve ordinance number 2023 dash 05.
Yeah, if you'll look at the ordinance on page two, it has the motion for you all to use out of state law. And then there'll be a roll call vote, a record vote.
Per state law, that's what we're supposed to do?
Okay, Mike, help me out, I'm.
But there's no law on amending it? I'm confused now.
Mayor, I believe that we're trying to approve this ordinance and.
Yes.
If you look on page two, there's the motion.
Okay.
Looking for page two, I haven't seen.
Okay, I've got it. All right, motion to approve ordinance number 2023 dash, and what's the number? It was blanked there.
05.
05. And that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point 05752, which is effectively a 12.94% increase in the tax rate.
That's what she needed to read?
Okay, we do have a second. I am, I'm still confused.
It's on there, yeah.
Now?
On the actual ordinance itself, page two.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay, okay.
Usually that's written into our.
This is where it is, right here.
I were confused.
Okay.
This is a roll call vote? It will be a roll call vote.
I mean, I, I know where she, we're supposed to be reading it, but he said per state law, but yet there's no state law on this.
This is what we will be using.
I got, I got that.
Okay, you want to repeat it, Kim, just for clarification?
I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023 dash 05 and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5752, which is effectively a 12.94% increase in the tax rate.
Okay, and we have a second? All right, all in, oh, we need a roll call, so Shelley?
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Mayor Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Her law, no.
And councilmember Harry?
Yes.
All right, we're good with that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. All right. All right, let's go to 6A.
Resolution number 06, 2023, a resolution expressing official intent to reimburse certain project costs from obligations to be issued by the city of Curval, Texas, authorizing certain consultants to prepare documents and take action necessary in relation to the issuance of such obligations and authorizing other matters relating to there too. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good afternoon, good evening at this point. So we're bringing to you a follow-up to our workshop item a few weeks ago where we talked about the issuance of revenue bonds for some wastewater, water and wastewater projects that were included in the master plan. Because this is a new, new technology for us today. So, sorry?
Everybody's getting a new turn today.
Yeah, I might get a zoom, you might get zoomed in, here in a second. So resolution 06 dash 2023, in a nutshell, authorizes the city to engage with our financial advisor and bond counsel, as we talked last time, to move forward with next steps regarding the issuance of revenue bonds for those projects or for a portion of those projects. And then also to reimburse any expenses that we incur related to any of those projects that would be paid for with the issuance of those revenue bonds that we incur before that. And so you'll remember with Stewart's presentation, I think we had over 100 million somewhere in need. The, the emergency stuff looked closer to 15 million. Go to our next slide if I can figure this guy out. So basically, our staff as well as our financial advisors, we took some really close look at our five-year forecast and what that looks like in our water fund. And we can't get 15 million, we know that. But we feel like we can pretty comfortably get between 10 and a half and 12 and a half million. So this resolution basically is written as not to exceed 12 and a half million based on, you know, some more research that we need to do and some findings with what interest rates look like and some structuring of bonds and those kind of things. We do plan on bringing a more detailed overview of our estimations for revenues moving forward in that fund to you in a workshop here in the near future. That way you can see where we're coming to these conclusions that we have the capacity and what, what we're paying off this year and what that looks like moving forward. We'll continue to work with our financial advisor with your approval of this ordinance and our bond counsel to finalize a preliminary official statement, which is just kind of the beginning steps of what a revenue bond issuance would look like and what that encompasses. And then. 6B. There you go. So, I want to back up one. Missing a slide somewhere, Martin. Okay, so I'm going to go over my slide because it's, I don't know why it's not coming up on this. So we were identified, this, bonds were identified basically as a funding mechanism for some of the projects that we talked about in our workshop, showing a need, like we talked about that 100 million dollars. So, and we'll, we'll keep bringing you that. I believe Mr. Garcia asked for some specifics on what our revenue estimations look like, where those were coming from versus the multi-year fee increase that we've talked about over the past few years that was talked about prior to this discussion. So that's what we're going to be bringing to you in a workshop in a lot of detail. So this is a timetable and I gave you the arrow, is kind of looking at where we are today. So that's talking about the resolution for the adoption relating to the reimbursement and then also initiating the process for the issuance of revenue bonds. And then next steps were really the, the big items were the start items. So we'll be sending the preliminary official statement after we've all reviewed it and worked through that process over to the rating agency for, so S and P. We'll have a call with S and P on or about March 6th and then we'll receive our rating on or about March 22nd. So the idea to move forward with these would be to do pricing in April and then to actually close on the bonds in May. Any questions relating to the resolution or anything we talked about last time? Stewart's also here if you have project questions.
Counsel, anybody have a, a question?
No.
All right. Are we ready for a motion, counsel?
I'm going to adopt resolution number 06, 2023.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from anyone before we actually vote? All right, everyone in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. And sorry you didn't have a chance to say anything. Thanks for being here.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate being here.
We'll look forward to seeing you again in the future. All right, thank you. All right, 6B.
Construction agreement with MNC Fonseca Construction Company, Eve, for Water Street Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $314,667.50. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, mayor and council. Okay, we, we just got the bond, I'm sorry, I'm working with Martin here to try to get this new, new program going. We, we got the, the bond issue, you know, issue discussed. And so now we're going to bring, bring you projects. We've got design complete and, and construction-ready projects. The first one we have before you of the two tonight to be solely bond-funded on this one is Water Street. What that is going to entail is essentially replacing old cast iron main. If you recall on that priority list on the water distribution system, not the plants or anything like that, four out of the top five priorities that the, the guys had in the utility department were old cast iron mains. This one is, you know, first on our list because we're construction-ready. This is going to be from Washington to Tybee. We had an alternate bid in there with the escalated prices. We, we downsized this considerably to basically get it ready for, for what we could afford. So the base bid is for about 315,000. The alternate. The alternate bid was a little bit more. Uh, we did still have the funds for that to, to be utilized, uh, in other, uh, other departments. So, uh, just taking a look, uh, let me see if I remember how he said to do this. Okay, so again, I think it kind of zooms in a little bit. So Washington to Tybee, uh, you know, there is significant growth in this area, uh, in, in the tuberculation of the lines. We gotta get this out of there, get, get capacity in here. And so, uh, what we have before you is, uh, M and C Fonseca coming in and replacing that line.
What is tuberculation of the lines?
Stewart could probably better define that, but, uh, basically, you know, through the years, you know, some of these lines are 90 years old, uh, the calcium deposits and whatnot, uh, basically, you know, start, you know, a six-inch line gets smaller and smaller, uh, so we no longer have a six-inch.
About to have a heart attack.
Long artery.
Yeah, um, so this, this is gonna be a, a splint on, on that system.
Got you. And, and did you give us a, and I'm, I may be missing it, um, kind of a timeframe?
So this one will take about four months, uh, to complete. Uh, we'll, we'll know more, we, we talked with the, uh, bidders today and one of the other openings, the, uh, smaller pipe sizes are, are still a little bit delayed, but this pipe, uh, we feel is gonna be, uh, relatively quick, uh, within, uh, about four to six weeks of, of material arrival.
How long will the, how long will the street be disrupted?
Yes.
So within, within that time, about four, four months.
Will it take an entire, four months?
Yes, unfortunately, this is all within, uh, the Water Street. You know, the good thing is Water Street is wide enough, uh, so we, we did hope, uh, in, in our, uh, plan development, we did hope to kind of stay within one side, have two lanes of traffic on, on, on both. We will also coordinate with, uh, Fire Station, uh, at Central Fire, and, you know, make sure that they have adequate access at all times.
And there's a Catholic church there as well.
Yes, sir. Get a little busy on Sunday.
You mentioned that the project was decreased in order to meet the funding that we're gonna get, so what's gonna be the next phase of this? What, what did we kind of take out from this part?
What, what we looked at internally, uh, from staff standpoint, like I said, those, those four, if you remember, the four, top four were all cast-iron mains. That, they're, the next phase won't necessarily be on Water Street. The next phase will be with Stewart's Department and what they have, I think it's on Galbraith, uh, that will likely be bringing, uh, something for design and construction of that.
Okay, so then I might, I might have misunderstood. So when you say we kind of decreased the project, it's not on this one?
Correct.
Just didn't include a different, another project?
Right, we, we had it going all the way to almost D Street.
Right.
Uh, you know, before COVID, we could have afforded this. Uh, now with, with COVID and, and the economy the way it is, we can only afford about half. And so with, with that other component, you know, if we want to spend 300,000, let's go to where we're continuing to have blowouts and, you know, send our guys over there.
It'll, it'll still need to be done, won't it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's miles of, uh, cast-iron line in town, so.
And the list of priorities, can you remind me where this one was?
This was number.
Sitting too long, I heard about my warranty days, I'm sorry. Uh, this is number four, or actually, it's the third project that was on the priority list that we presented last week. Um, and so it, it comes back, comes in after the Galbraith to Florence, uh, or on Galbraith from Florence to Culverston, and then the second position was Quinlan, or, uh, uh, Quinlan Street from Stadium to Main. And so this would be the third project on that list.
So we're starting number three, just because of the funding amount?
Yeah, because we were already under design for it. So this was identified, um, about a year or so ago, because of the tuberculation we found it, and the tuberculation is very similar to a clogged artery, the, as the pipe rust and gets calcium growing in it, um, it gets restricted in there, and we can't get the flow, um, that we need through it. And so our utility department actually went to the other side of Tybee in Washington, and we extended it, or replaced a two-inch main over there, and that got us some breathing time, because the cost for projects has been so high right now, we needed, we wanted to kind of tap the brakes and kind of let it settle, and thank goodness, it, it is kind of settling, and that's why we've come to you all for this bond and say, hey, we think that the market's gonna be right. It's, it's time to start the designing process for these other projects, so we can have a little bit more buying power with these, with these bonds, so, um, that's what we've done. We've done some stopgap stuff along the way, um, but it's, it's time to replace some of them, some of these ones.
And that was gonna be my last question, what kind of the, how much more breathing room do we have on the other projects that are, for lack of a better word, are in higher lists of, in the priority than this one?
It's hard to say. Um, you know, I, I don't know when things are gonna break. The, um, the, the study that we had Freezing Nickel to do for us identified all of them, that was their top priorities on that, in those studies. Uh, this was one of them. Uh, we, we picked out the ones that have, that we've been experiencing the most repairs from our utility department, so in that fact, they're already failing, and, and, and making our guys be out there, um, more often to, to do those repairs. Um, how long before it just blows down the ground, there's absolutely nothing left? I don't, I hope we never get there. We don't let them go that long.
Thank you, that's all I got.
And we have worked with, uh, this, this company before.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, we have no speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right. Kyle, anything else you wanna mention?
Uh, no, ma'am.
You're good? All right, uh, counsel, are we ready for a motion? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much, counsel. Thank you, Kyle, and you've got more for us, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Construction agreement with M and C Fonseca Construction Company, Inc. for the NAP Lift Station Force and Gravity Main Project in the amount of $4,895,585. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, give us a second to get up on your screen. Uh, so same contractor, uh, you, you mentioned, or you just asked, we have worked with them repetitively, uh, throughout the years. They do a lot of our projects, uh, most recently, they did some con, concrete work, uh, on the library ramps, but they do also have utility division, uh, one of our better ones to work with. Again, this was, uh, M and C Fonseca, and, you know, we, we were kind of, kind of glad to see this one come in at the, the bids that it did. Uh, we, we did have a, the force main from the NAP Lift Station up to, uh, Lower Street, and let me kind of zoom in here for you. So, yeah, okay, that's, it gets as far as it's gonna go. So about, uh, the, the Walmart areas, what we're really looking at, well, it's not gonna let me see, so if you can see this little laser pointer here, uh, essentially, what, what we're planning on is the, the growth. And we had that long list of priorities in the wastewater collection as well, and I don't have a screen. But essentially, the, the first component we had to do is get the collection downstream between the two lift stations. So Napalift Station, Jefferson Lift Station, we've gotta get that collection in. Before we do anything with NAP, we have to upgrade, so that, that's what this is gonna do. Uh, the other thing we wanted to do is, uh, get out of the tech side right away. So, uh, it, it does look like an interesting route, uh, through Center and Woodlawn and whatnot, um, and then alignment study to get the best feasibility, you know, get some of these, kind of same as, as water, get some of these old lines, uh, out, out of service and, and get onto this new line. Uh, collection areas is still the same, but we, we've done the Jefferson Lift Station upgrades, we've done the Legion Lift Station upgrades. Now we've gotta start moving, uh, westward. Uh, with this, this is also the Legion Lift Station remaining funds that have been approved and allocated for, for this project. There's about 3.6 million, uh, for design and construction. So this, the remainder of that is gonna be paid by the bond, uh, dollars that, that we just discussed, um, and we're ready to go into construction. This one, again, uh, much shorter lead time. This project, we're, we were anticipating about a year, uh, that's when we were also expecting three to, uh, three to four month lead times on, on certain materials. Uh, we're, we're hearing that's now about one to two months, so, um, by this time next year, we should be getting pretty close to wrapping up.
This will allow the city to help further service areas to the west, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, as, as we go westward, we'll, we'll have to continue. The next improvement would be the Napalift Station itself. And that's all I have.
All right, uh, counsel, any further questions for, for Kyle?
Do you have a range about how many more developments this is going to be able to hold? What, what capacity does this have?
I know there's been a couple that we've had to turn away. For example, Yogi Bear, uh, they wanted to add additional units. We've, we've had to turn them away, because there is zero capacity on the western expansion. Uh, there, as, as far as potential additional developments, I, I don't have a, a good number, because some of them have kind of, you know, tapped the, uh, the inquiries a little bit and then just gone away completely, uh, not really telling us what, what it was.
Right, I just mean, in terms of the capacity that this is gonna be able to hold with, because it's gonna be in addition to what we already have. So, at what capacity are we gonna be able to, to accept additional developments into this area?
So there's still, uh, I don't know if you recalled, on the wastewater master plan, uh, there was a big ticket item that was several, several million.
Oh, I remember.
Like 10, 15 million dollars. Um, so we had the, you know, three or four million dollar Napalift Station, then we had the, similar to this, the collection system outward. Uh, so what that did is that catalyst area, getting all of that developed, getting, you know, any improvements, uh, you know, out Goat Creek, out, uh, you know, 27, any of those, we looked at, at, uh, you know, the use that, that we see in those areas, we looked at some of the developments, like, as you just mentioned, that we've kind of seen, uh, similar to, to Yogi Bear, uh, you know, we got with the planning department, going, you know, through all the, uh, catalyst area requirements and, and zoning and what it was and wasn't allowed, and, uh, basically got the best, uh, highest use, uh, so that we can, you know, maximize, not the, not necessarily the most dense, but the, the highest use, and, and so as we upgrade these lines, we're, we're planning for, you know, for that long-term development. Is that good for 100 years? You know, that, that's dependent on, on growth, but, uh, we're, we're definitely looking at, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years with, with this.
It really depends on the intensity of the use that comes in, the density of that use and where the location is. But it helps continue to build capacity, uh, further out the line.
Thank you.
I know this is, these are big, big numbers, and, uh, we would all like not to have to spend them, but, um, uh, I, I think we owe our past councils, uh, a thank you for, uh, good financial work that they've done and, and our staff, uh, to be able to, um, to be able to, to get this kind of a bond and be able to do the work that needs to be done. So, um, it's not what any of us would really like, but, uh, it's necessary, so. All right, counsel, are we ready for another motion?
Authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
On the next item, I have, I'll not do it, because I have the.
Oh, that's right.
Conflict of interest, so I'll be right back after your answer.
You need to excuse yourself, yes. All right, thank you, Joe. All right, we are ready for six D. Do you want to read that in, Shelley?
Yes, ma'am. Professional Services Agreement with Hewitt Engineering for the River Trail Downtown Extension in the amount of $154,500. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good, thank you.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Attached is a professional services agreement with Hewitt Engineering for design services of the downtown River Trail Extension. And as a reminder, the council approved the funding agreement with the EIC at your December 13th meeting, um, and this cost will be included in the project budget. The next step in the process is approval and execution of the design contract, and that is what staff is recommending. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Counsel, any questions for Ashley?
Was there any more to the presentation before I make comments, or?
It's just the map, if you wanted to.
No, you're, you're good. I just wanted to make sure I didn't interject myself before you had anything else to go to say. Thank you.
All right, do you have some questions?
No, it was just a real brief statement. I think everybody knew where, and still remembers where I stood on the project, um, but it's gone through, we have an agreement signed, and now we're just looking at what the proper use of the funds that we have in the agreement. So with that, I'll be prepared to work on what we're getting started and using that money for that.
All right. So do we have a motion?
Um, I'll authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the profession.
And I'll second that, okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right. Thank you again, counsel, and somebody want to tell, uh, there he is? He hurt us. He hurt us. All right, and I think we are ready for our last item, seven A. Julie, take us home to bed here.
I'll try to get my technology right. Try to get my technology right. Got too many moving parts over here.
And I don't mean we'll fall asleep.
No, I'll, I'll do my best, okay?
You got it, go ahead.
Try not to give you too many numbers at once. Okay, so bringing you a financial update for, uh, the end of 2022, so 12/31. I don't see anything. I see nothing on my screen, it must be me. Okay. So I just wanted to give you a quick highlight of where we are with inflation. I know we've talked about that a lot, uh, through the summer and also through the fall. So you can see, um, inflation is pushing down a little bit, um, can't really say that it's leveling yet, you know, we'll have to wait and see what the next, uh, few months bring. Definitely better than we were in January of 2022, um, but still high compared to, you know, the last five years as we look at it. And gave you just a little history on what the Fed has done, and if you look at that, you can kind of see what the direct reflection of the lowering inflation is there, as the Fed has continued to raise rates. So I thought it was kind of interesting, and I had some other things in here that I pulled out, because it was too much, but I wanted to show you this guy. Tell me, it must be me. There it is, okay. So this is a 20, a 20-year look, and I just think it's interesting, when you look at that green line there being where we are now, um, this isn't the first time, so this isn't something new, um, to the US economy, and I think it's interesting to see where deflection actually occurred and, and what happened during those periods of time. I think we all know, or some of us saw those and some of us didn't. But right now, you know, I don't think we're in that pressing of, uh, of a situation, but I just thought it was interesting to look back to say, you know, times have been better and times have been worse, and so I think it's just important that we continue to, to study and monitor and make good decisions as, as we go forward, um, and spending money.
Can I clarify, when you say inflation is leveling out on the, the slide you had before, is it that when we get to the six number that you had there?
No, I said I, I can't say, I can't tell you that it is leveling out. I can just tell you that it's moving downward, so whether that means it's leveling or not, I don't know. Uh, we're just gonna have to wait and see what the next few months bring, so. The Fed does meet again on February 1st, they are expected to raise, uh, the rate again, so, uh, we'll just have to wait and see what their action is and how that, how it impacts us overall.
In your graph at the top left? What is, what are those numbers indicating, percentages?
Inflation rate, yes, percentage.
Rate, right, okay.
Yes, this is the same graph, I think we've been looking at it since like July, June, July? But basically, the percent of inflation rate. And this is on regular goods, remember, we were talking about oil and, and gas and petroleum based stuff, that's a completely different conversation, so this is just US inflation as a whole. There we go. Um, it's just giving you an update on fuel, and we've looked at this too, uh, throughout the budget process and trying to decide where we're gonna land on fuel. Fuel went down a little bit, has come back up a little bit, it's not really enough, uh, to really impact us from a budgetary standpoint, um, but we're watching that. Uh, you know, we're definitely spending less than we budgeted per gallon, um, how that holds, you know, over the next few months, uh, we don't know, but just another factor that, that we look at as one of our bigger expenses. But just another factor that we look at is one of our bigger expenses. Okay, so we'll hop into the general fund here. So property tax, you can see a little bit behind where we were this time last year. That's not that concerning considering December and January really our biggest property tax months. So looking at it as of last Friday, we were 68% collected, which is a pretty good number. And so this time last year, we were 66% collected until the end of December. This year, the end of December, we're 63% collected. So it's really just kind of relative to the way the collections are working. Sales tax, slightly ahead of budget and definitely ahead of last year. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Service revenue, it looks a little behind there, but that's because of the timing of Republic payments. We're early in the year. So till those level out where we don't have the five-week months and those kind of things, sometimes they hit in out of period. So that'll level out as we go along. Recreation revenue, running a little bit behind last year. You can see that. Remember that golf is in that number two. We did have some bad weather days in November and December as were reported by the golf pro over there. And so we're just watching as we go into tournament play and see how that, how that comes back. Personnel, better than budget. We do still have some staff shortages. Training hasn't really fully engaged yet, and that's in that number two. So again, it's early. So it's really hard to make any projections on what that's going to look like as we go forward. Do remember, as you compare to last year, we have done step plan changes to public safety. We had a cost of living increase and those things. So I went back and looked at what the difference was between 2022 and 2021. And it was in the $400,000 range over last year, the total, that total expenses. So it's not that out of line because the 977 kind of scared me too, but I started looking at some of the bigger items. And that's really in line with where we should be. Okay, we're going to talk about sales tax just a little bit more. So remember, sales tax is received two months after the sale actually happens. October of '23, we had some future payments there. So it gave us kind of a big jump in October and a leveling in November. And so that explains why you had a big spread there in October and not so much in November. December didn't have any out of period payments, so it looks kind of regular on the trend line. January does include a $50,000 future payment, so we'll talk about that a little bit more when we talk about financials for January. So we'll just, so basically February won't have the $50,000 extra because we received it early in January. So we took, look at all those things when we're looking at overall impact. But what we show you is the actual percent change, so including those out of period things. 12-month rolling average right now, 8.8% increase. It's definitely not the double digits we were seeing before, but still a pretty solid average for 12 months. So we're looking at it month to month. We're looking at it, you know, quarter to quarter. We're looking at it year to year. So, you know, constantly doing analysis there, I see. So just, just really monitoring that. Also, put a little chart at the bottom there for you just so that you can see the city versus EIC. So the city has that one penny of the sales tax per, per sale and EIC has that half of a penny. So just a different look. And this was just a little bit more on what we were talking about with property tax. We were talking about collections. This is five years of data, just kind of what kind of percent we collect each month. So that's why it doesn't bother me too much that we're a little bit behind last year because the collections are what the collections are. And it's just a matter of when they come in. Did some people do half pays this year that maybe didn't do last year? That stretches it out a little bit. But looking at five years, you can see kind of by month, this is how we usually collect it. So after February really drops off quite a bit, and then we start seeing those prior year numbers come in. Okay, take a quick look at the water fund here. So water fund revenues are ahead of your today budget and ahead of last year. Sewer revenues really in line with budget, slightly ahead of last year. You'll see that waste disposal line. We talked about this last year. Since the drought, they just haven't been having a lot of septic dumps and chemical dumps over there. I can't say the drought's what's causing it. That just seems to be the common denominator. So, you know, $19,000 is not a whole lot when you're looking at the entire water fund. It's just a little bit of unusual activity there over the last several months we've been watching. Interest, better than budget. You know what's going on in the market right now. So overall, on the revenue side, looking really good. Personnel, right now in line, really in line with budget overall. And the maintenance line item there, remember that we bought the two carbon, two sets of carbon for the water plant. One that was budgeted in '22 and one in '23. So we'll be bringing that back to you for a budget amendment. And that'll line that out whenever that expense comes up to offset that. So that's just a timing issue of when we pay for that. Just a quick look at rainfall. So you can see rainfall totals here. We keep this in your utility billing office whenever we're doing monthly activity reports. And so 2022 received 11%, I'm sorry, 11 inches less rainfall than 2021. So pretty big, pretty big impact there on the consumption side, which we'll be bringing you more of when we talk to you about revenues. Okay, on the Development Services Fund, revenues better than estimated and better than last year. So looking good over there. A lot of projects coming in right now. Expenses slightly behind estimated budget, but we did have a large expense right in the beginning of 2023 that was actually for a project we received revenues for in 2022. So you see those kind of splits sometimes when you're talking about those kind of funds because you can't really anticipate when things are going to be coming in. Net is much better than we were at the same time last year. So given some things we have coming on board, we kind of have high hopes for this fund and budget this year. Hot Fund, revenues are better than budget and also better than last year. December was slightly behind. December of last year, we're still kind of looking into that to see if we had a missing taxpayer or something like that. That happens from time to time and similar to sales tax, and then it'll rebound the next month. But month over month, we continue to be ahead around 7% over last year. Short-term rental permitting process has begun and we're starting to see those come in. And of course, Guillermo can speak more to that, but we track that too as far as just looking at short-term rentals and who's active and who's, you know, regularly doing reports every month. So we're starting to see that come in. Solar eclipse planning, continue to talk about that. I know you had a workshop on that recently. So you start seeing some expenditures out of this fund specifically dedicated to solar eclipse. And also wanted to point out, and I think we talked about this during budget season, that we actually have a net negative budget. So more expenses than we do revenues in this fund. So remember, we have a transfer to HHHC out of this fund that was approved many months ago. And so we're using some fund balance there, but that's a million dollar transfer and we're not using all of that. So we're able to cover that with some regular budget revenue. So maybe a less of an impact if revenues keep growing. So just wanted to point that out because that sticks out pretty good. I thought I'd bring this to you once a quarter instead of bringing it to you at year end. And you can look at this, you know, of course, as you have time and if you have questions, let me know. We don't talk a lot about these other funds because there's not a lot of activity there. Or there's activity in a fund that doesn't have to be balanced for one reason or another. Grant fund is very precarious. It's up and down, depends on what's happening and what's going on at the time. But the four I wanted to point out is Parkland Dedication because we did spend the money out of there for the fitness pad. So that's, you'll see that's the expenditure there. Library Memorial, just pointing out there that we do have money committed to HHHC that is within that. And then just a quick update on asset replacement as we start getting ready to talk about budget. So leases, right now we're waiting on two vehicles still from last year's budget and 10 for this year that are already on order. It is early in the year, but just supply is still an issue when it comes to vehicles. We did receive our Streets Paver that was budgeted in 2022. So we've received that at the beginning of '23. So that was pretty exciting for those guys. We've received three patrol vehicles, including the K-9 unit, which I'm sure you've already seen. Got information on the dog and all those things this week too. So some exciting things I think come in there. We're waiting on three purchase vehicles and we're still waiting on two ambulances. So pretty big backlog when it comes to public safety vehicles right now. So more to come on that. But if you have questions in particular, definitely let me know. Just a quick upcoming event so you know what's going on. We've already kind of started doing revenue estimates. And that will go on until July 25th. Kim will start working on personnel estimates. And we work through those all through February, March, and April. It's kind of a big process working through that. Departments are already working on their operational budgets and their plans for 2024. We'll continue to work with Hilltop and with Bond Counsel at your direction for the revenue bonds and bring information back to you on that. And then we'll be bringing you on the 28th, our annual comprehensive financial report. And so our auditor will be here to talk to you on that day. And then you can see the other things moving forward that we have coming up, and we'll try to keep this updated each month. I'll be getting you a budget calendar pretty soon so you can see exactly what's going on. I know everybody can't wait. Super excited. Anyone have any questions for me on?
Thank you, Julie. All right. Thank you, Julie, and yourself. All right, we have arrived at the end of the evening. We just barely, under eight o'clock, under, yeah, eight o'clock. So at 7:50, oops, one other thing. I'm sorry, I'm not ready. Is there anything for a future agenda item that anyone would like to suggest? Okay, I have one. I would like for us to take a look at moving our visitor and citizen forum to the end of the meeting possibly. So, but I need a second.
As a, just as a discussion.
As a discussion.
So we're just talking, you're asking that we have on the agenda to talk about it?
Yes.
Future agenda.
Or.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I don't think it would be a workshop. I think just put it on, on the agenda to look at. Okay, we have a second for that. Thank you. And we do need to vote? Yes, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, three, four, and one opposed. All right, very good. And at 8:00, 7:59, we will adjourn tonight. Thank you all.